Welcome everyone to the regular board meeting for the Rockcastle County Board of Education. It's good to see everyone's faces tonight. This should be a fairly quick meeting, there's not very much on our agenda surprisingly since school starts next week. So, that means that all business has been taken care of, ready to roll. So, the first thing on our agenda is a moment of silent prayer. Let the row call note that Ms. Angie is not with us tonight. Item one C is the reading of board team commitments.
To improve our effectiveness, the board team for Rockcastle County Schools commits to: Review processes and experiences to identify and direct improvements; continuously define and work toward long-term goals which serve all students of the district; make each decision based on the facts and the best for all students; listen to each other and speak freely; work together, support each other, and not surprise one another; discuss board deliberations to point a mutually agreeable resolution based on factual information; support the majority's decision projecting board unity towards shared goals for continuously improving district-wide student learning; operate without personal or political agendas; respect one another, agree to disagree respectfully; delegate implementation to superintendent and education team; and to respectfully remind each other of these commitments.
Item two is adopt the agenda. I'm not aware of anything that needs to be added or changed. So with that being said, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Item three is our school and community showcase. Deco Architects is here for us to have a middle school building project event. Welcome.
How are you all?
Good.
Very good. So this month we're gonna change things up on you and try to keep you on your toes. We changed formats, we're not gonna do a slideshow. I think you're starting to bore out with it. So we're gonna go to a video this time. So what we're gonna show, we'd still like to retain a little mercy here, but we're showing about a month's worth of progress on developing the interiors. So the interiors are gonna take us about three months to do. So this is one of three. But we'll develop the interiors, this is our first kind of stab. So what we did is we focused on some key areas. Like the entry areas, the library, the cafeteria. We just focused on that and we're trying to kind of discern a language of what it's gonna look like in there. Because, you know, there are a lot of decisions to be made. So, we're experimenting with you all this month. We're showing you what we've come up with and we're just kind of seeing what you come back with. We'll see if you like it, how you respond, and then that'll help us drive the next couple of months as we develop. What I think we'll do is he's gonna play the video, I'm just gonna sit down, we'll let it do its thing, and then after we'll talk about it. Okay, so that's where we are at the moment. So again, so we talked about what we showed, but let's talk about a few things we didn't show. So we're intentionally not showing a plan this month, because we busted it back up and we're working on it. So remember, we talked last month, we're trying to get a few square feet out of it, and so we're in the middle of that. We fell a little short on delivering it tonight, so we just thought we'll avoid it. But, from here, we're just trying to get a finger on your all's polls to see what's good, what's bad. And then, we need to kind of get into some of the nuance. So, we show a computer lab, and we like it. And some of the cues we took from Mr. Phillips of, you know, what is a modern library? And how is it different from a traditional library that would've been built, you know, years ago? And, a lot of times you kind of land on, well, it's a computer lab, or it's really technology-heavy. And so if we're gonna make decisions like that, that may influence the plan to continue to shift a little bit. And maybe we try to combine it with the lab, or something to where you can get bigger, grander spaces, or something. So I think our next two things is check your polls, take your feedback, and then begin to get into the nuance of designing individual little spaces and getting everything just so-so. But we were curious how you would react to us painting your gymnasium as Mars? We thought this would be the most controversial moment, when you go in and your gym is pink. But, we thought it was a lot of fun. And the trick to this is, it looks kind of radical, but really it's paint. Everything in here is pretty sensible. It's a hardwood floor, we all know you're gonna do that. So it's a hardwood floor, and everything on the walls is paint. And then the ceiling, we have to have a steel structure to span the space. And then, we have tectum panels, which is a really cost-effective sound absorption panel that you need. So, none of this is really freely silly stuff, it's just stylized in a moderate way.
How many people will that gymnasium fit?
I'll tell you to the bank, but we think six hundred. We have that at the office, I just don't have it.
That's just in the, is that just in the bleachers, or that's bleachers and floor seating?
Bleachers.
Okay.
Cause Mount Vernon Elementary, it's kind of got the same layout.
Well, I had this too, I mean, if they don't have that open end, like, auditorium part, but, yeah, that's more than what I was thinking.
On the gymnasium, can you go back to the gymnasium? Uh, where would like athletes go to, I guess?
Locker room.
Locker room, yes.
Yes, yes, there are dedicated locker rooms.
Okay, over there, okay. I was just curious.
It's like Livingston, it's up the stairs.
Up the stairs, over top. No, that's good.
Up the stairs and then up the stairs again.
That was a good design.
Well, I made it in Livingston because it kept you so hot as a mystery.
The, uh, one concept we have...
We cheered in the bleachers.
So, no, you're good. So, we've, this process has went really great so far from our perspective. Everyone we've worked with has been fantastic. And everyone that we've worked with thus far understands that we can't one hundred percent please everybody. But if we can, if we can seventy-five percent to ninety percent please everybody, then that's great. And that's the goal, we'll shoot for a hundred, but it's impossible. So everybody's just been fantastic. The only pessimism we have to report thus far is that you have the existing storm shelters. And we thought, oh brilliant, because we'll reuse them and save some money. But, we studied them and had a structural engineer look at them, and we can't. We can't reuse them as storm shelters, they won't meet modern requirements. So, that's one reason the plan's busted up, because we're reacting to that. But one concept that we've had is we could push locker rooms up on the stage and the existing gymnasium, and that would actually be about the best use for it. And then we could clear all the square footage that the locker rooms currently use and blow those open and make spaces out of them.
Classrooms or just...
Right. And then that'll allow us to reduce the new building a bit. So, that's where we're at, and that's why we're not showing a plan.
I think that, I'm always so impressed, I just wanted to let you know. I, I do have a comment about the library, okay? Cause I'm an avid reader, I read a lot. Uh, and I think that's something that we need to welcome, of course, for our children. And I guess, looking at it, I, I mean, and this may be totally something that's not possible. I'd like to see a little bit more, where more sitting comfortable besides just the computer chairs for a child if they had time to read.
Is it inside the little mind thing?
Yeah, and it, it may be inside the mind.
They had one area that made like a key.
It was a circle, wasn't it?
Yeah, I could use.
But now, I can see, I'm, I'm an odd duck. Because when I read, I like to kind of be sitting off to myself.
Like little cubed areas, maybe.
Kids may not be like that anymore.
No, I think it's really good feedback. So what we have in this proposal is this is like a presentation space. So we thought you could also use it as a, you know, bring a class in here and make them give, you know, public speaking. And I think that's a positive.
Oh, I see the little chairs over there to the side now, I see those. I mean, there may be more of that type of setting for, you know, cause like, for me, when I, I'd like to get off to myself to read. And I think that, you know, even though technology is fabulous, I still think it's very important to put a book in a child's hands sometime to let him, you know, have that. But I, this is beautiful.
We agree. I think that's something we can work out.
Yeah, that's beautiful.
Two comments about the library. I don't know how many feet of shelf space we currently have, but that looks very small to me, book-wise. So I don't know if that's, I don't know if it is or not, maybe it's exactly the same amount we currently have. The other thing I would say is the, I've, I've heard some people talking that these have sort of made a computer lab obsolete. So I don't know where we're headed as a society with that, I mean, that looks awesome. But I don't know what educators' thoughts are on matters.
We have need for computer labs definitely in certain programs, engineering. The need for filling the library with a bunch of computers is lower because they all have one. But there's still spots, and there's still special uses. Maker spaces that he mentioned are amazing, because that's, I mean, in elementary school, that could be Legos, that could be a drone, that could be 3D printers. I mean, there could be a corner with 3D printers that kids have time to go and build something with 3D printer. You know, I mean, that's the way we're, that's the way we're going. But yeah, the comfortable chairs are great. Computer labs are, you know, where you work tonight, when you picked up a promo, if you're in a computer lab, it didn't have very many computers. So, so we know, we're making that transition. But we're, but we, there's still that need, you know, there's still that need. Project Linkaway at the high school, computer science at the high school, they still need those desktops, sometimes.
How often do our kids, like, actually, can I notice they pick up a book? But do they pick up a book, or do they read it from here?
Some won't pick up a lot of digital copies and stuff too, that's sort of the way the library...
I have a Kindle that I read from every night. But I still, there's still...
Part of it.
There's still something about holding a book in your hand. I, I think that if, we need to encourage children still to do that. Absolutely.
Think about the old libraries though, a lot of those were references. Think about all the encyclopedias, you know, those are, those are...
They can have several sets of those.
Not the, not the good sort of books for kids, but...
The language has changed in those.
Yeah.
I have a question, another question. The band room, I noticed it, and I was, I was thinking about space. Years ago, and this may be different now, the band only met a certain time of day. Is that room going to be band and chorus, or is that, you understand what I'm saying? Like, choir and band, are they combined for that room? Or is that two separate rooms? I mean, years ago, the middle school band only met like, what, one hour?
Mr. Darty, of course he splits time between high school and middle school. He was there two periods at the middle school and then he was at high school for the other, other days.
I was just curious, you know, because I thought maybe that could be something that would free up space if they shared an area, maybe had separate offices or something. It wouldn't, I think that would be something that'd be feasible.
That's what they're doing in the middle school now? Do they still have two separate rooms?
Give your band room, then the choir room. And, and I mean, Greg's there at least half the day. So, he's there three periods, and then he's at the high school.
And I'm not trying to take away, it's just that, that was a thought process, because that just goes to show, you had no idea he was there three periods a day.
Yeah, I mean, he's there a little over half the day. And, and then, you know, Ms. Burdette, she has six classes a day.
Oh, she has six classes, she's all day, okay.
Yeah, so you can't really...
Yeah, you can't do that.
And that was one of the things, when I was looking at the plans, that we talked about, because they had them, they did have them together, like you originally, like you said.
I was thinking originally it was.
Yeah, but they went back and separated them out, still in the same area, but they separated them back out.
One, one thing I thought, some of the colors in the rooms, that one for example, I think is great. I think it's the band room that had the yellow and the purple ceiling.
You don't want it to look like Somerset.
Well, that's...
You're in Rockcastle, no, baby.
I just worry about dating it.
Right.
With, with decor, I like the fact that it's not all the same floors and all that, but I just, I worry that a purple ceiling in ten years, we're gonna be saying, ah. So I don't, I don't, that would be, I don't know, that may be a further down the road conversation. I'm the least qualified to make color decisions, also.
At least we're not colorblind, hey, there you go.
He was just talking about, you know, those are just paint. You know, when he was referring to the gym, those are just paint. Just take a little bit of time to go over or whatever.
I think the only one I'm here to defend to my dying breath thus far is the, is the ominous red coming out of the concession area. Like, I think that one's critical. I think that's, it's gonna get you some victory.
I agree, I like that red right there, that's the entrance.
Yeah, I know, you keep saying like, things may change and whatever, but this is like the third time we've seen this. And I, when you started, I thought, I'm really used to the way this looks right here, it just is so red.
I really don't want that to change.
Yeah, I really like seeing this every time.
And I hate to even say anything to you, you're the professional at this, I'm just hearing all, I mean, but...
Well, we appreciate that, but no, it's, we really appreciate the feedback. Cause it, like the, the computer lab discussion, you know, we can work with that, because, you know, it's a pretty common complaint we hear is that we don't want computer labs. We've heard districts say that. But the KDE book still says, we haven't revised this book in ten years, you need to have computer labs. And so there's kind of a conflict. But that gives us a little bit of leverage, because we can combine spaces, or we can get you a bigger, nicer library that, you know, breaks the mold of the book a little bit. Cause that's the trick here in the gym, right, is we're combining an auditorium and a gym, and getting a bigger gym. Which is, which is smart within. But we can play that game in other areas.
I'm actually, this, this kind of surprised me a little bit. I wasn't expecting that size, to be honest with you. I really like that. I even like the mountains of red, the red mountains, you know?
Do you think we could do acoustics in there?
That's the intent, the gym's always the biggest complaint. So we have the entire ceiling in tectum. And tectum is the old, you've seen it, and it's not very impressive, you know what it is? The swirly board, you see it on ceilings a lot. But we thought, well, if we stuck it all the way up at the top of the roof and painted it, it'd be a cost-effective way to kind of mute, and you would essentially have a drop ceiling in your gym, without actually having one. Because the other thing is they take so much abuse.
I love this. I think blue is calming. You've got your resources and your guidance, and I think it's calm.
So I just have one, one question. Can we go back to the courtyard? But I will say, this is, this is, this is awesome. It really is. So I, I think that you've got, it's exciting for any child to go in this building and learn. And you've got something for each child. I mean, it's, this is really exciting. So I guess my question is the security piece. I love the wall on the end, but with the best route, but like, let's say some kids are on that green. Is there anything that would keep an outsider from coming in there?
There's gates that are gonna close.
The gates close?
Yes.
Okay.
They close after the bus is run through.
If I may, because we didn't talk about this. So, this design has evolved, and we tinkered with it each month, it's been just a little different. So the initial concern that we had, when we presented it the very first time, is we're gonna have buses coming through there, sure we can put bollards up. But, ultimately, if you have kids out here throwing a football, or they're playing cornhole, or kicking a soccer ball, or whatever they're doing, we don't want them getting over into the bus traffic, that would be like the biggest. So what we did is elevated that whole plane and separated it behind a wall. So we feel really good about, the activity is not gonna bleed out into the bus traffic. Now, I think if you were gonna criticize the design, and if SRO's watching in the doorway, what he's gonna say is that's a lot of walls, it's a lot of walls to hide behind. And I think, in the current draft, that's the concern.
I was gonna say, what about, I guess I see kids goofing off and sitting up on the side of the wall, if somebody slipped off?
You were that kid. Only a kid that did that, thinks like that, okay.
Not gonna deny.
So where would the gates be, right through there?
Yeah, where the portal is, where the bus comes through. Right, yeah, so right there at the lane.
So is that the only drop-off place where kids get on?
Just for the bus.
Just rock.
The parent pickups in the front.
And when they get off the bus there, do they go in up this ramp, or do they go into the, the lower entrance? The red doors down?
They have options. So the sidewalk can get them to the library, and get them to the cafeteria, or they can enter the lower level. So you have, you know, all of this is ADA, so you can get to both levels from the bus drop-off. And it's ADA.
They go on the right side, then they don't have to cross approve the buses.
Correct.
On the, when the video first starts, the facade is the blue and gray brick. Is that painted, is that actual brick, is that...
It's a good question. And, we're still wrestling with it. The easy answer, you know, to hit a budget is just get a cheap brick and paint it. And, I personally really like painted brick. So I think that's the default answer.
That might blend in with the other.
That might let us paint the other one.
Well, that would be a cheap fix, I mean, as far as make them match.
That's what I was thinking. That would make it a little, keep it all kind of go together.
It's a sound structure, it's in great shape. That was my thing, it's just, you know, you've got this beautiful moon, and then you've got totally different color. And that would be such an easy fix.
But then, if you do that, that takes this really kind of wild, hyped-up colored building, and it makes it pretty simple. I mean, you're, when I went through school, we were taught that brick costs three hundred dollars a thousand. And, that's not true anymore. You can get them for four fifty, five hundred, but if you get a really nice, high-end brick, you know, something that is gray and has a metallic finish to it, I mean, it can be a thousand dollars, two hundred dollars. So if we stuck down to the bottom end and then painted it, it's a good cost-effective fix, and then we can blow that money on crazy ceilings and...
But, but, in the long run, how, what is the lasting amount of time that that's still gonna look decent? I mean, I mean, would it be cost upkeep of it?
Yeah, there would be an upkeep. You know, but I think it's not three or four years, I think you can stretch that and get six, eight, ten years, out of a really good, commercial-grade enamel paint.
Well, I, I like the red in the gym, I'm, I didn't notice it was pink at first, but after you told me it's pink, I can't stop seeing the pink.
That is all about the colors.
We're trying to get ahead of it and do it while it's a video, and while it's not, the paint's actually going on. You need to go back and watch that Matt Damon movie. He's a, he's the Martian.
Well, listen, I love the library, I have to say. Which I've always been a library gal anyway, that's always been the, the part of every school that it draws me. But, I love the space in there. And that courtyard behind it, I really like that.
It'll be fun.
That'd be good for kids, yeah.
And we're not showing the doors off yet, but we'll get to it. But yeah, you'll be able to exit the library and go out onto that balcony.
That'd be really nice.
I love that each room has its own design, its own color, flair. That way it's not just, it's not just boring. Is it very inviting, that's a good word.
Well, I, I just have to say, I, I really, you know, I've told you this before, I'm very impressed, and, uh, the only thing I was missing is, you know, when you were going up that ramp, you know, those stimulator, you know, where you sit in the chair. Like you're going to take the log truck, I got a little dizzy for a second, so.
Maybe next month.
You like the colors of the cafeteria, don't you?
I do, now, I am, I have to agree with Matt.
That's the lady from Blue Bill.
I have a little, uh, the lime greens and the yellows and the purples would be something that I would question over time, but I'm not the expert, you know, so. If, if research shows that these colors are inviting for a child, and it's a place that creates a learning experience, then I don't care what color you paint it. I mean, I really don't, I think that, like I said, you're the expert, you know what statistics show, so, but yes, Anna, I like the blue and the yellow, the greens and colors, I can't help that.
We could have a, we could have a.
Orange and black.
We could have a tiger red.
The tricky part, and what we've been trying to work out behind the scenes, is that you have your school colors, so you want those on the exterior, so we're not allowed to put purple and gold and all those colors outside, cause it's a, it's a Rock Castle school. But then are you gonna be restrained by that the entire way?
I think the outside in the auditorium gym is good.
Right, okay, so our strategy has been everywhere that's public-facing has to be school colors, and then once you get inside and you're more compartmentalized, we can break the rule a little. But we don't, we wanna break it the appropriate amount.
I did notice that the library was carpeted. Uh, what about the, is everything else tiled, or is?
It's still negotiable, but the concept was the ceiling was hard, so then we made the floor soft, and it was an acoustics thing. Um, but that's still negotiable, we can, we can reverse that or.
I'm sure Drake won't be in there either, so.
I was, yeah, okay, I see the band, I was gonna ask about the music rooms.
And so this has acoustic treatment everywhere, on the floor, on the ceiling, on the walls, and it's all, this is one of the lesser baked areas and, you know, but we have something, so we thought we'd show it.
So all classrooms have windows?
Yes.
That's wonderful, yes. That's, I love that. And you know my kid will be the first one to spill paint on the floor. You know, people.
Because you were that kid.
I was that kid.
You guys have done a great job.
Amazing job, I love it.
It's really, really nice.
I mean, if this is what we had to take today.
No, that one's, that one's a biggie, it's one of the big things that we've gathered, so we actually pull in an equipment consultant and we'll come meet with staff to get, cause it's a big deal, you gotta get all the equipment, right? So, that's one of the remaining two-thirds we haven't done yet.
You know, I have to say, Anna just said the very same thing, you know, if this was what you brought to us for a final product right now, I, I would be pleased with it, I'm just, I, I think that you are doing an outstanding job, so thank you. And thank you for the updates.
Absolutely.
It's, uh, it's exciting, you know, and I, when people ask me, I tell them, I tell them, wait till you see what's gonna happen, you know, so I think that, uh, when our public, you know, just sees all these things, it's just gonna be something that they're just gonna get so excited about. And our kids, it's gonna be a big.
The kids are gonna be so excited for coming to school for at least three months.
Good, okay, so we'll be back next month.
Great, thank you.
I don't think we need any approvals next month either, right, it's the next month after next, right?
October.
Yeah, so I think we'll just be back with a general update, and, um, and then the following month, we'll pe- probably pester you for an approval, so that we can keep the K D E stuff going.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Exciting, exciting. Item four on our agenda is operations and actions, and Ms. Carrie wanted to discuss item, uh, G and H with us before we approve that.
Um, yes, Ms. Jennifer has turned in all of her information to K E D C for us to finalize the bids for dairy and for bakery, but we have not received the contract back from K E D C. So we're asking for you to approve these, these are routine standard, these are the same bids we, we have gotten, um, over the past several years, we're asking you to approve these and give me permission to sign off on them when we do get them, so we can have milk and bread when school starts.
Do we think they're gonna come back in about the same, maybe a little elevated?
It was the only bid that we received.
Two that bid, uh.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, we need to go with.
We need milk, correct?
We could approve the.
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Item five is our discussion and action, um, A, review and approve to move forward with the tax hearing and the advertising, so we need to set a date for this, correct?
Yes, we do need to set a hearing date, and as you know, this is, uh, we have to set these dates within strict parameters, we have forty-five days to finalize the whole process, and. The hearing has to run in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks prior to us having the hearing, after it has run in the newspaper for two weeks, then we have to have the hearing seven days later, but it can't be past ten days. So, with all that being said, August the thirty-first falls within that timeframe, um, in.
So will this be the first week, this week, or next week will be the first week?
It cannot run until the seventeenth.
Okay.
Because that, that deadline is noon today to get it in. So it will not run, it will run the seventeenth, the twenty-fourth, and then seven days later is the thirty-first.
That's on a Wednesday.
Yes, so if you all are available on the thirty-first, we can set that hearing for that time, and whatever time works best for you all to do that.
Since that's a Wednesday, if we could do, if we could do a little earlier.
So we could get to church.
So we could do church and stuff, if that's okay, uh, what about your work, Anna?
I get off Wednesdays. I can be off at four, I usually work in town, so if I need to be here at four thirty, if you don't wanna do work at five, I'm pretty flexible.
Matt?
Four, four thirty, five, any of that would work for me.
Why don't we aim for four thirty on that day, is that okay with everyone, we'll do four thirty? On the thirty-first, and that will be our first year.
Yes.
And then, what, do you wanna go ahead and let's set the date for a second?
Um, we, we need to wait to do that based on what happens at that time, yes.
Or do you wanna wait? Okay, sure. All right, so we are gonna go ahead and approve the, the date for a hearing as August the thirty-first at four thirty, we will let Ms. Angie know, make sure that that, I, I'm sure she will be able to work with that. Need a motion to approve?
To approve.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, item five B, five B, review and approve the monthly financial reports by Ms. Jennifer.
You have your monthly and financial reports, um, and you'll note on, on Fund One that we have received our S F C C offer assistance. From the state legislature, and that has been, um, applied to our account. Do you have any questions as you review the, the report?
Everything looked pretty similar, okay, Matt, do you have any questions for that? Not, I need a motion to approve the monthly financial reports, summary, either first and second, all in favor? Item five C is approve the investment of three million dollars of the four million dollars received from the Kentucky General Assembly restricted to the construction of Rock Castle County Middle School.
So as you know, we received four million dollars, um, from the state legislature for our middle school building, we would like to have your approval to invest three million of that four million. Um, the one million of that, we will keep out to pay the architect fees as we go, that we feel like if we could invest that three million, then we'll get, you know, earn some interest on that and, and, and that will service our community best.
Where will that be invested at?
We have been in discussion with Community Trust Bank, and, um, they have, um, worked with us to offer, um, um, an excellent rate for twelve months. I'm gonna have to motion to approve.
All in favor? Thank you, Ms. Jennifer. Item six, review the superintendent's personnel action report, there's a lot of action.
It's a lot of action happening right now.
A lot of action.
It's time for school to start, so.
So we, we have new faces, but not really, Robbie, you're not really new, we don't even count you. Sorry, you're too old to be Canada's new.
Been here a long time.
Yeah.
Uh, I would like to, what positions do we have posted right now, if you don't, do we?
Actually, we've gotten a lot, oh, well, we have some classified coaching positions filled, but, or posted, but certified positions, we have the assistant principal at the middle school still open, we have a preschool teacher at Broadhead. That is open, and then we have Ms. Jessica's spot here at Central Office that's open.
We think I'm gonna get a sixth grade math teacher.
Yes. Uh, item seven, department reports, Mr. Phillips, we'll start with you.
Well, this is something very new to me, I realize, I got a lot to learn. Um, it's just a few things, um, that I've started, um, y'all may know, Ms. Ballinger had asked me to stay at the middle school until, you know, they hired Ms. Willis in this case, um, she'll do a fantastic job, I'm sure. Um, but I've been working with, um, already made contact with some local universities and stuff like that, made several, actually while we were at CASA last week, I got to talk to several. Ms. Ballinger sent me, uh, something this morning that Eastern had sent her, just as an example, and, um, Eastern wants us to send in a video showcasing Rock Castle County. So Ms. Rachel Cornelia's at the high school, uh, she works with the student council up there, so they've already agreed to take that and run with it. And so I'm not only gonna share that with Eastern, but I also wanna share that, I like to share it on our website, and I would also like to share it with other universities within an hour's drive up here, to try to tr- attract more student teachers. And, and that way we can get people here, show them how good we are, and they'll wanna stay, uh, just to try to attract more people. Um, I made contact, I got to meet Mo Jones, I don't know if y'all met him, he is a dynamic speaker, and I look forward to working with him with equity and diversity, and bring that, especially to the middle school and high school. To me, those are most critical, uh, areas to work in, and so he is very real, that's one thing I've learned, he does not have anything, he speaks his mind, and, you know, and. He just lays it out there like it is, and, and I love that about him, um, so I'm really excited, um, one thing I'd like to do is him to speak at the middle school and high school, work that out, I hope. And then he would like to come with me, and then he and I just walk around schools, you know, just to let him see what's going on, just get his own take on it, and, and, and then he would like to come back and speak, does that make sense? I just got some trainings coming up, um, just trying to learn the new role.
You're welcome.
Thank you, I'm excited.
We're kinda boring up here, you're gonna find.
He's hit the ground running, and I appreciate Mr. Phillips for just being willing to say, sure.
I just do whatever needs to be done.
I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Mr. Ken?
Yep, so I'm happy to report that all bus routes have been filled with full-time bus drivers. It's a good place to be.
A few counties that can say that.
On top of that, I also have a full-time substitute bus driver in place as well, gets a little iffy after that, but. We'll piece it together, we have some options, got some options, got some pieces, it's just a matter of making it work each day, so it's a really good place to be in, and a whole lot better spot than where we were this time last year, so. Um, and I have talked to a lot of people, a lot of phone calls, a lot of interest, few applications, so, um, I think we're going in a good direction, but we'll, we'll see.
All of our buses are good, ready to go, have our drivers picked them up yet?
They're in the process of picking them up, we're still waiting on delivery of two new buses, which is really, really inconvenient right now. So we're, we have got a plan together today, if those are not here by the first day, who's gonna have?
That's kind of back, I mean.
I guess, we ordered them in October, so it's a little frustrating.
So when you get those, will you still have to install both cameras on the buses, or will those come with them?
No, they come with it, they, it won't come with it, but once it gets to Bluebird and Lexington, that's one of their responsibilities, the only thing that we'll really have to do once we get it is to install our CB radios. Make a license, register, get it insured, and it can be on the road pretty quickly, I've already got.
About a day.
Yep, I've already got the checks to go get the license and registration done, and the radios are already there and ready to be installed, so. We, we would even probably go get them and help them install the cameras if we needed to, but, yeah, so that's, that's been a little hangup, but.
Those were ordered in October? Almost a year?
Yep, yep, a little frustrating, but.
Probably have the parts we're sending on a ship somewhere that have just been unloaded three months ago, not cute.
Well, it's wonderful that we have all full-time bus drivers in place, that's wonderful.
All full-time drivers, no coaches, no teachers, any of those spots, so.
That's great.
So I've got some of those coaches and teachers now that can be subs, so that's good, you know, like I said, it's a good place, we're a good place, it could change quickly though, I could get a phone call tomorrow, somebody takes a different job, so, as of today.
Thank you, Ken, and tell, tell all of your drivers and monitors how much we appreciate them.
I sure will, thank you.
Mr. Ripper?
Getting ready for school, obviously, we've had, uh, it seems like there's been so many trainings, we've had all kinds the last few weeks, we've had, um, today we had active shooter at the high school. Uh, K S P's been doing that at each school, had brought it yesterday, tomorrow's middle school, Thursday and Friday is, um, Roundstone and Mount Vernon, that's a very intense training. Um, and it meets an area, the area I believe that we're the most vulnerable, is if something happens right then, you know, I think we do a pretty good job with, um, prevention. Um, and then we, we had a tabletop exercise, um, on the twenty-sixth of July, to work through the actual scenario with all agencies, that went super well, um, great collaboration, great communication. We realized, not just us, but several agencies realized there's things that we need to do, uh, if that happened, um, very good discussion, very open discussion, and that, those, those discussions are continuing. Um, but the active shooter, um, you know, obviously, that's a, that's a training that, um, if we have a shooter in the building, what are we gonna do? So, um, K S P does a great job giving our staff options, uh, run hot fire, so going through that, um, again, that's all this week. And then next, and then on Friday, we've got gatekeeper training, um, that's for all of our secretaries, we'll go through the Raptor procedures that we have in place right now, but then Wes Corbett will be here from Kentucky Center for School Safety to talk to your secretaries, all of our office staff about how important it is, uh, visitor management. And the fact that we are, um, following procedures and being aware of, of who's, who's coming to our buildings and who we let into our buildings. Um, so again, that'll be on Friday, and then next Tuesday, uh, have trainings with the tenants' clerks, um, about the process for attendance, attendance I C, regist- registration, the register, and. How we keep track of, of attendance, we haven't done that, I've not had that, um, so I'm looking forward to that myself, there's some things, you know, I've been doing this job two years, and they didn't have a training because of COVID, so I'm looking forward to that.
Well, you get to learn how to do your job.
That's right, well, our clerks, thankfully, our clerks, they know what they're doing, they're the ones that've been there a while, so I've relied on them. Um, like Ms. Sherry at the high school, Ms. Becky at the middle school, uh, they've been there forever, so they've really, I'll call them.
That's where you have to handle.
They really do, uh, on, especially on that register, you know, I, um, I don't know a lot about that, so I'm looking forward to that, and we've got some new folks in those spots too, so that's next Tuesday. So it's been very, very busy, we had threat assessment training for new principals and, and our threat assessment teams last Tuesday, Wes did that as well, Wes Corbett, Kentucky Center for School Safety, so.
All of this safety stuff going on, I've heard like, just on the radio news, blah, 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 a lot of schools are going to either mesh or their backpacks. I know that was a thing years ago, but I can't imagine having to try to find that again.
Yeah, and, and, you know, there, there are some districts that are doing that now, um, you think about Uvalde, that wouldn't have stopped that shooter. You think about, uh, the guy down in Florida, Stoneman Douglas, that would have stopped that shooter, there's other, there's things you could do, people talk about metal detectors, but again, um, it wouldn't have stopped those shooters, so, um, you know, you have to balance. Yeah, the, um, the burden that that would place on parents additionally.
That's what I was thinking also.
You know, it's, it is a balance, uh.
I can't, that's why I was saying, I can't imagine being in that position right now to have to find that.
Can I ask you, um, the, um, training, the active shooter training, is that for all? Can I ask you, um, the, um, training, the active shooter training, is that for all in-school staff? Is all, or is, are we selecting certain individuals?
It's for all staff. And bus drivers are not going through the, that KSP active shooter, everybody else in the, in the building.
They need additional training.
We did, we did a lot of additional things with them.
Bus drivers.
We did a lot of, and Kim, they want to talk about this a little more, he had, he had homeland security in with, uh, an expert. So, he has went above and beyond, in my estimation, this year, training his staff, more so than what even the state requires, and, um, we gave, we showed, we looked at some videos, but then, he's, I think he's went above and beyond on that.
We did two hours worth of, of safety and, um, scenarios and presentations and discussions. Mr. Tom Hackett was involved in that as well, and, uh, it's good feedback, really good feedback, and they're, things they're definitely thinking about as well, so. Like there's preparedness can be.
But today, for instance, cafeteria, um, workers were in here, and we did, we did the video, and then, so you gotta do the one-hour video, and then you gotta do the actual training, so they're getting a lot.
They're getting a lot.
And, uh, you know, uh, but to me, it's our number one job.
Yeah.
So, we, we're gonna do everything that we can to, to train our folks and help them be equipped. We had today in the library at the high school, we were dragging up chairs, we probably had eighty people in there. There was, uh, about, uh, everybody was there and-
Well, I, I mean, it's not a training that anyone wants to do, but I think it's something that, I think that it needs to always be in the forefront of your mind, you know, and just in case. It's the ifs in life that catch us off-guard, so, you know, I've always, I, I, I commend everyone for getting this together and KSP for, you know, everything they're doing. I think it's great.
In addition to that, last Friday, we had our district day, and we had some trainings. Mr. Tom did four sessions on situational awareness. You know, above and beyond all this, that staff could choose to go through, and his, about all his sessions were full, so. Uh, and that's, that was just a general that we, that people could use anywhere, um.
Will there be anything done with the students? Like, would they come in, will they go through any teaching, like if this was to happen at school?
With all of our, our drills, for instance, at, at the, at the middle school, um, the first and at the high school, too, they meet with all grade levels. And they do talk to them about, um, and, and I've, I've been delivering, um, took some middle school day, and I got to take those to other schools, about what to do if you, if you have a concern, and what to do whenever you do have a, have a lockdown situation. Um, so that's, that is, it's, that's different at every school. Uh, of course, in elementary, they do that, their teacher would do that and talk to their classroom about those procedures for fire, for severe weather, for, at the high school, again, it's, it's just done by grade level. At the middle school, it's done by team essentially, but, uh, but that is all.
At the middle school, will the, the doors be set up like they are at the high school? I know when the doors shut. At the high school, that you have to be let back in the classroom, they lock, correct?
So, in the new middle school, we're, we're, we're gonna put anything that we possibly can to advance safety.
And that's state law, or?
Yes, all the doors have to be locked.
Doors have to be locked, all exterior doors have to be locked.
Um, when little Haley Thacker came in here, and they were talking about, uh, you know, how students could scan if they needed mental health. Uh, I thought, when I was at the high school the other day, I saw the posters and stuff on the walls, and I thought that was so great. Is that something, you know, um, is there something that we could put in place if it's not already, that if students have a concern, that they can do that automatically, you know?
Uh, the scanning, that, that, that was-
I mean, you're still wanting to say a barcode, that they can, you know, that they could, um, do an immediate, because, you know, a child, a, a lot of times, they don't wanna get in the middle of telling anybody because, that, you know, maybe if we had something in place, that that could be made of, of awareness that, hey, if you have a suspicion, you send this, and it could be followed up without getting a lot of people involved.
Well, and, and we do have, we've got bullying harassment, and then we've got the stop tip line, and that's on our website, and that's on, now, you can't stand anything like that at this point. Um, that was for mental health, but, but of course, um, you know, any of those, we get those noti- those, we don't get those mental health necessarily, but we get those notifications from the-
But we had talked, Brandon, previously about putting a button on the Chromebooks, so we need to revisit that thought of how that we could make that happen, because all of the students at the high school are gonna have their Chromebooks.
Like I know on our computer at work, like, we have a red folder. If you have an emergency or you have a problem, and then you flick the red folder.
Yeah, that might be some, that might be something that, I mean-
We talked about how you can just bookmark.
We did, we did, so we, let's revisit that.
It shouldn't be that hard. I mean, it, you could do that, but if you wanna generate a QR code that just took you to that part of the website, I mean, that should be easy to do as well. I mean, either option, or both.
We, we, just a website, so we can put the bookmark on every child's Chromebook, it'll just be there, they'll see it, they can click on it anytime they want to, even if they want to. Or, you know, we can also have the QR codes to take you to the same place, but we can, we can do both.
I think it's better to do too much than not enough.
Absolutely. They always want to err on the side of being over-prepared.
Over-prepared, yeah.
We got the phone.
Sure.
How'd you get to it?
Well, thank you, Mr. Redford.
Thank you all.
Ms. Jenny?
I apologize, you do not have a report in there, but next month, uh, we'll be looking at our budget. So, currently, we, we are analyzing all areas of our budget, and we're receiving our award notifications for Fund Two grants, so we're, we're just looking at, at everything, and Miss Ballinger and I've had some conversations, um, you know, even today, just analyzing everything so that we continue to maximize all of our resources. So, we'll be bringing that back to you next month.
Ms. Jennifer?
Food service, I put your menus in there for August. Um, that has been the bane of my existence.
That milk.
Yep, that milk and bread.
And making sure that we-
We can have those things when schools are, school arrives, but, um, talking about those cafeteria staff, those food service workers, we had our first big altogether training today, starting, uh, today and tomorrow, and they're already in kitchens, uh, cleaning, preparing, placing orders, getting ready to receive those orders and, and prepare some delicious food for our kids. Um, and they are just wonderful, wonderful ladies.
Are you fully staffed?
Yep.
Awesome.
Got everybody where they need to be, and I'll have a pretty large and growing sub-list, so.
That's wonderful.
We have some, just who may have to be out, and we, uh, we'll have coverage for that, so that'll be helpful to those managers. I know that they, um, carry a lot of weight and wanna make sure that our kids are taken care of, so.
It's a huge job.
Yeah, it's a huge, and nobody really knows.
It's a huge job.
It's a hard job.
I talked to a lady when, the other day at Open House, and, uh, she had, she's worked a lot of jobs and did a lot of hard work over the years. And she said that this was by far the hardest job she'd ever done working in school cafeteria. She said that it was by far the hardest, and I, I was just like, wow, 'cause I know how hard she had worked at other positions, and she was just saying, so, yeah.
Well, you know, when we were fixing the food for the staff, and we're standing there cutting those onions and filling those little cups, and I'm like, how in the world? I mean, it's, it's a difficult job, and they do that every day for a long time.
Twice a day.
Twice a day, yes, and they love those kids. That's the other layer, you know, those relationships that those cafeteria workers make with those kids. Uh, you know, there may be students who will come and talk to them because they're close to them, for whatever reason, and they may not go to a teacher or somebody else. So, just trying to support them and lift them up and let them know how important they are to, to our team and our family and our schools and our community. So, I'm excited, and they're excited to get started.
I'm excited. The nineteenth chicken noodle soup, I can't wait.
I already sawed that, Jenny, I was like, okay. I took it, chili was on there last year in August, and I was texting Jamie, I said, what about, she said, take out chili, and I'm like, yes, we don't need chili in August. But we need chicken noodle soup and grilled cheese, 'cause it's my favorite meal of the whole month. So, I'm really excited. I, I think probably in October, there's a, a big food show coming up in Louisville in September. We may be able to get some new menu items and, and some things that, yeah, that kids, they are fun. But, you know, you have to get food that kids are actually gonna eat. We can put Big Agent Orange Chicken in there, but if kids aren't gonna eat it, then it's, it's a point. So, trying to find interesting things that kids would like to try. Middle school and high school's a little bit easier. Elementary, they're pretty picky.
You ever did those little, like, um, like testers, where you put little samples out, let kids try to see?
They have done that, and we're gonna start doing that. We're gonna do, um, surveys with kids on certain days to find out, you know, what they like, um, what they've enjoyed, different meals, and one last thing, and I'm like, shut up, I'm sorry. I would like to do some nutrition and some food classes, you know, in schools, go into classrooms at the elementary, middle, and high school, and take those cooks in there with me, and let-
Oh, that would be wonderful.
And do some presentations on-
They would enjoy that, the kids and the-
Yeah, cheese and food, yes, yes. So, I'm, I've kinda clued them in that they're gonna be drafted, and they're like, okay, so, I'm excited to be involved with the kids.
A lot of kids don't know how to prepare food, like, you don't wanna cross-contaminate stuff. I've heard a lot of adults say, you know, they've went through a couple of microwaves because their kids didn't know not to put metal in them. I mean, just simple things.
Simple things, but then also helpful, making helpful choices.
Choices, yes.
Making good choices.
Yep.
Um, that will impact them later, you know, when they grow up, so.
I've learned in the last few years that, uh, I've always cherished and thought that I'm a good mother, but I, apparently, I did not teach my older daughters how to cook, because as they were growing up, I wanted them out of my kitchen and get out of my way so I could hurry and get them. So, they informed me that, Mom, you didn't teach us how to cook, and I was like, oh, my goodness.
Well, and obviously, my thing-
How can I be the cook? If I cook all the time and not teach my kids how to cook?
If you talk to my mom about what I'm doing, she just can't help but crack up. She was like, because she said, you don't even cook. Yeah, I've just learned a whole lot, and I'm, I'm excited for the new year.
Thank you, Jane. Brandon?
Amy told me I didn't have much time, but I didn't know it because she was gonna take all my time. So, of course, we're getting ready for school, um, um, I can't say enough about all my help that I've had this summer, getting Chromebooks ready, a lot of stickers to fill off, a lot of broken Chromebooks. We went through them with a fine tooth comb, you know, they had USB ports or screens, or, I mean, it's been a lot to look literally with a fine tooth comb on every Chromebook that we've had, you know, we have, um, over, over three thousand, it's a lot. You know, when you start going through those, it's, it's a lot. Uh, chargers as well, lots of things to keep up with. Uh, we're giving those out, we had Roundstone's Open House last night, so we gave those out. Tonight was middle schools, um, tomorrow is Broadheads, and high school starts, and Matheran starts, and so we're going through those. Um, I am talking to parents a little bit about the Chromebook user agreement. I am saying out loud that we could charge for Chromebooks that are broken. I'm also attempting as hard as I can to reassure them that it's on our goal to charge them. But I'm, you know, I'm telling them that, um, we have a fee schedule in there. If they break a screen, that cost for us is fifty dollars. We won't charge them if they break a screen one time, we're not, you know, and we know that we're giving Chromebooks to kindergartners, you know, and they're gonna break those. And we're giving Chromebooks to tenth, twelfth graders, really doesn't matter, but, um, I, I am making them aware, trying to as hard as I can, that we, we could charge them, but also that they won't be charging, they'll know it's coming before they ever get charged. Um, so that's what I'm trying to do, but I don't want anybody to be surprised. You know, you know, we've had kids that had more than one Chromebook a month last school year, you know, and we've, it's, it's, it's bad. We've had crazy things happen to them, you know, we've talked about some of those, but, um, it's been hard, you know, and we, we've gotta get better. So, I've assured parents in lots of cases that we're gonna, our teachers are gonna get better at teaching their kids how to take care of it, we need their help as well. Um, we're all gonna get better at teaching kids to correct, to take care of them, and what to do and what not to do, not just with, uh, not just physically take care of it, but also mentally and emotionally, and, and what, what is right and what is wrong, what to tap in and what not to tap in. Um, I've been trying to tell parents that they can sign up for the, there's a weekly internet report where they can receive a report, an email, about what their kids searched for. They can see everything they searched for, everything, everything that was logged, even the time they were on it. So, so I want, we want, I mean, I've made it a goal for a while, but I really wanna make it a goal this time. If a kid has a bad search or inappropriate search or mental health issue search, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna sign that parent up for that report myself, and they can, they can opt out, but I'm gonna force them to be signed up for it and make them opt out if they want to be so. We're gonna, we're gonna do that a little better, and we're gonna do some digital citizenship stuff a little better, and, um, you know, a couple of years ago, we gave everybody a Chromebook, and now it's time to kinda catch up and make sure they know how to best use it, how to best take care of it, and, and, so we're getting, um, so, I'm excited about that. If you hear people say, oh, they're gonna charge them for Chromebooks, well, we're not gonna charge them for Chromebooks, but, uh, you know, in some severe, in some severe cases, there has to be some penalty for intentional misuse, you know, mostly intentional misuse, mostly not even actually, because, um, I do wanna talk about the panel, I brought one over so we could see it, but we did receive that, our youth grant, it was a million-dollar grant, just needed a lot of work on that. I did a lot of work lately, she did a lot of going down.
I did the easy part. He, he's, he's, um, done outstanding job in coordinating the installation and, uh-
We were, we were, you guys remember, first we applied for the grant, then we didn't receive it, we were notified that we didn't receive it. Um, then we noted, then we, we were told we received it, we were shocked, and then we didn't think we could get the equipment at that for school. Then we got the equipment, and then we thought we didn't, couldn't get it installed before school, so last week, literally last Monday, they started putting those in at the high school, and, um, and then we were using it on Friday, right, for our district day, right, so, um.
They were great.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was real quick, so it was good, but our installers were great, the company we worked with was great. Um, we, we just got really, we got really lucky. Um, but we have one in every high school classroom, so there's forty-two in the high school, and then we have one in, in, uh, all the professional school classrooms, the academy, and each school library. So, the elementary school's library has, and they have two for a school, but they'll have one in each school library. They have a PC in the side, so you see there's no cords, just have to plug it into the electric, um, so as long as it's plugged into the electric. Some of them are on a cart, some of them are on the wall, I, most of the high school classrooms are on the wall, but there's, it's a computer as well, so the computer's just there. It's an Android device as well, um, it, the Android device has some features we can do. I can, I can wirelessly throw, the term is throw, my Chromebook screen up there, so teachers can, will be able to do that yet. We haven't had that training yet, but we'll get there. We did a little training on, on Friday, uh, but we'll do some more. But they can wirelessly throw their, their Chromebook up, their desktop from the back of the room, we don't need a cord running from the back to the front anymore, they can connect that. They could even tell their students to, hey, let's put your, your Chromebook up there, you did something, it's a great, let's put it on the screen and show everybody, so. Um, you know, they have, um, this one doesn't, but they have webcams for, and then the webcam's actually tracked, so if there was, there's cases where we need remote instruction for students, like if you can't even put a remote online kids, um, or, or any other situation, then we have that, we have that webcam there that's great quality, easy to record their screen, easy to, to just, if they're teaching in a normal classroom, then we could share that video with, with their, with their, with the student, even if they're absent, so, so, really excited about that. Um, really excited about a lot of stuff. Been a crazy couple of weeks, and we got some more to do. We had a fiber, we had a fiber get hooked, the line got hooked. We have, so, you know, guys know, several years ago, we got our own fiber to each school, so we had our fiber line hook, so Roundstone was down on Sunday, and they were worried about Open House. We've had some problems. We, we got it back working, and, um, everything's good. Getting new phones, Tritt's doing that, but it's a huge big deal. We haven't had phones, I always say it's a huge big deal, I need to find new work, so. It's been a long time. I told some of the staff that our phones, when we got them, they were a completely different color than they are now, our old phones, 'cause they've kinda turned yellow as we go, um, um, so to have new phones is a big deal. Some really good, really good features, uh, really good features, really excited about that. Lots of projects we're finishing up, and lots of them that still not ready to finish up yet, but we're getting there.
Thank you, Brandon. I had a question for Mr. Redford. I've made myself enough. How many students are we starting out with MyRock Online?
We've got, uh, talked to Mr. McClure today, we've got less than forty.
Less than forty?
That's, that's, yeah.
Thank you.
I thought you was gonna ask control members, which that's a little deceptive, I hate to say right now, because we don't, we know what we've got, we'll start on the seventeenth, but we got a lot of students that are, there's a lot of movement right now, students coming in and students going to other, you know, people just moving.
That's about a third of what we had last year?
Uh, yeah, we had, at one point last year, we had about a hundred and seventy, probably, we probably must elevated around Labor Day. That's when there, it was, that was, we're doing test to stay, remember that?
Nope.
Don't think back to that.
So, yeah, at one point, we were, we were, so, yeah, we're, we're, we're-
That's good, that's good, that's a good number, that means more kids are in classroom, that's wonderful. Ms., Ms. Carrie?
Um, I just wanna take just a moment and, and talk about our district day that we had, um, last Friday. I just want to take just a moment and, and talk about our district day that we had last Friday. Some of you all were able to join us, but it was really just a phenomenal day. And we started off just, Commissioner Glass welcomed everyone back. Of course, that was through Zoom. And then we had a wonderful guest speaker, Ms. Talora. She told her story about her daughter and the Ray of Sunshine Foundation. I think that that really impacted a lot of people. I've had many, many staff members reach out to me just to say how much that they gained from, from that speaker. So I'm thankful for her. She has a phenomenal story and did a wonderful job. And then we broke into our breakout sessions for the professional development, and we had thirty-one different presenters. And just really good topics and appreciate all the teachers that took time to present. And that was, that was a lot of extra work, but they, you know, they were, they were selected from their peers. Their peers selected them as experts within the district, so really able to capitalize on the strengths of our, of our teachers and of our district staff. So it was just a really good day and everybody jumps in and we served lunch to the staff and that was, that was very nice. And it was a lot of work, but of course, again, this team comes through and they're always willing to jump in and help wherever we can. It was a really great day. And then we also went to KASA conference and had a district team leadership retreat. So we were there for two and a half days and a lot of great learning, a lot of really dedicated, solid time that we could spend together planning for the upcoming school year with our principals.
Really enjoying that. I've got a lot of good feedback on that.
So the principals, we, we were all there, the district office staff and our principals, and we just had uninterrupted time that we could work together. And not only that, but just the team bonding and allowing us to be, be together and, and get to know each other even, even better than we already do. We've had, you know, new, new principals, new staff members, so it was very, very, very good and beneficial time together. So it's been busy, but we're, we're ready for school to start, ready to welcome kids back.
It's always great to have visitors. Mr. Dylan Gorski, thank you for coming. Do you have anything you want to say? Introduce yourself.
I was introduced as well. My name's Dylan Gorski, preparing for District Court Judge for Division One. I like to attend these school board meetings and it's helpful. Right now, in kind of a lot we deal with in juvenile cases and even the parents coming in, it seems like there's a lot of opportunity there for the court system to kind of interact a little bit better with the school systems. And it's not even just with the parents that are coming through and the impact on the kids, but also with kids in those juvenile settings and resources and help that they need. And a lot of times, people here is kind of disjointed, court system's trying to deal with something that also the school system is dealing with, but we don't talk to each other. So that's something I would like to work on, have it collected, so I want to get any thoughts and feedback that I can get. So definitely, I said, I've got some cards I can hand out to you guys toward the end, but I say, just feel free to approach me. I want to take a few time trying to go around the room and see where everybody's thoughts are, but I say, feel free to come over and stand with me. I'll be happy to talk with you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Board comment, ma'am?
Well, I just wanted to say, I was at the RCMS Open House today and it was a good atmosphere. Everybody was in a good mood and Chromebook distribution was smooth as silk and, so just, just had a good feeling. Everybody, teachers and staff and administrators, everything out there seemed really, really good. I'm sure all the others are going that well too, but it just felt like people were excited to be going back to school, which is, is ultimately what we all want.
Did you do online registration?
I did, way back, like two or three weeks ago.
I just wanted to brag on the PD day as well. I was able to attend a few classes, but seeing all the teachers and actually seeing a couple of teachers in the community that evening, and they had their red shirts on, so we knew that we were all part of Rock Castle somehow. But they said that they had been teachers over twenty years. And said they had never enjoyed and got as much out of the training as, as that day. So I think it was very well received and planned and just a great day and was glad to be a part of it, tiny part of it.
Not much, just thank you all. I know there's been a lot of hard work going on this summer in a lot of different areas and it's been a knockoff job for you all and I appreciate all the time you've given. I'm ready for school.
The only thing I had, I had talked to Ms. Carrie the other day and I just wanted to make sure the other board members knew what I had discussed with her. I haven't even told you, I was gonna say this. She had asked approval, I think, for last month for a kindergarten teacher or something. And, and I told her, that falls under her site-based allocation that's already given to the schools. So that's not really something that we as a board have to approve on a monthly basis because that money has already been set aside for those employees. Does that make sense?
I mean, we know what we need to have in a classroom, and if we go above that, then we, we know we have to create that decision.
Right, but like it is, I just want to make sure that we all knew that.
That way she's never waiting on us.
That way she does not have to wait on us, right. So I wanted to just reiterate that because I didn't want anybody to be confused or people in the public to be confused that we're creating tons of these positions. These are positions that have already, the money's been set aside for. So just wanted to make sure everybody knew. And I didn't want you to feel like I was putting you on the spot or anything like that. And besides that, the district day was great. I was so happy to see all the staff and everybody looked so excited and it, it was great. Talora, she's got a powerful story and, you know, my heart just bleeds for her. So, but I had met her before. She's a phenomenal lady and I think it was great that you got her to come. And the other thing, I'm thankful for all of you all. I know you all go above and beyond every day as well as our teachers. And I'm, I'm excited and, listen, I'm really excited about this middle school project, okay? I think that, I think as soon as we can get put on our website, we not, we've not done anything. I think if the public, you know, when they see what's gonna happen, I just think that they are just gonna be, they may be out there with shovels, ready to start doing whatever, you know. I mean, I think that it's gonna be great for our community. So with that being said, thank you all for coming tonight and we need to adjourn this meeting. Matt, you want to make?
All right.
All in favor? Thank you all very much.